Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Which is one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
A trick I learned from Mrs. Akri from the Budget Committee. Hope everyone enjoyed it with the flag. And welcome to our May eighteenth Tiverton School Committee. Motion to move up. Item seven C. Spotlight on success. Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposed? I'll take that as unanimous. So, Mrs. Craven.
Thank you, Dr. Locken. I'm here this evening to congratulate Madison Kudo for her recent award from the National History Day Organization. And with us this evening is also Ms. Christine Costa, the program's advisor. So I'm going to turn it over to Christine. And Mr. Connavally, if you can pull up that slide presentation, it'd be great.
Hi, everybody. So National History Day is a program that encourages historical research by students in which they have the choice what topic in history they'd like to investigate. And then they report their findings in one of five different methods. They can decide to create an exhibit, write a research paper, conduct a performance on their own, build a website, or create a documentary. This year, sixth grader Madeline Kudo was recognized for her achievements in creating an exhibit that focused on communications with lighthouses. And for that, she won a particular award that recognizes Rhode Island history. So, Mrs. Craven, if you can go to that award too on the, perhaps the next slide. Oh, and I can just read the bottom really quickly. It says, "The Rhode Island Historical Society Award is presented to one outstanding entry in any category in both junior and senior divisions that significantly engages with the history of the state of Rhode Island. Local topics tied to national or international contexts are particularly encouraged." This basically means out of every single entry that was submitted into the Rhode Island's National History Day contest, Maddie's was the one that was recognized for this state award. So Maddie, would you like to share a little bit about your exhibit?
Uh, sure. So basically, my exhibit is about lighthouses and I included George Washington's Lighthouse Bill and, um, uh, many of Ida Lewis's heroic rescues and adventures. I chose this topic because it just very, it really interested me because I live in Rhode Island and lighthouses are very related to Rhode Island. Um, and since they communicate with nonverbal communication, as in lights and sounds, I thought that it would be good for the topic this year.
Very good. Every year, the program asks students to conduct their research based on the annual theme. And this year's theme was Communication and History: The Key to Understanding. And Maddie's topic definitely related to that extremely well. So, well done, Maddie, and congratulations on your recognition. Outstanding job.
Thank you.
Maddie, thank you, Mrs. Costa. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Maddie, that was a great job, really well-chosen topic and well-executed. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job, Maddie.
Thank you.
I'll see you at the softball field Friday night.
Okay.
All right. And I think we also have another item, Mrs. Craven.
We do. We're also here this evening to congratulate Ava Malukas. I believe Ava is on the call. Um, I'll let Ms. Alves introduce Ava and introduce why we are congratulating her this evening. Ms. Alves?
Hi. I'm so proud of all of my NJHS group. Every individual, we've all logged many community service hours on our own this year. And they all had an opportunity to compete, to receive an award within the NJHS community. Five hundred exceptional students were honored with an outstanding achievement award. And Ava was the only applicant from our group and one of six winners in Rhode Island out of the five hundred exceptional students chosen. And each person was awarded a $500 college savings fund account. Ava is exceptional. She is humble and she is a true leader and gives everything she has to service. Some of the highlights that she showed this year with our group. For example, we had, she came up with an idea to create motivational posters for some of the students who were returning in January from being online learners. And she not only came up with the idea, she created a beautiful piece of work for, to hang in our cafeteria so everyone could see them and invited other students to also join in creating these posters. She also has volunteered several times to make any flyers, to advertise any of our projects that we had. One of our most recent projects, we donated many items to the Tivered and Old Stone Church Food Pantry. And Ava made the flyers beautifully in, you know, a quick turnover time. And she's always just willing to do whatever I ask of the group. She's ready to lead quietly, but she shows that she is the leader also. And some other works that she's done over thirteen hours of service, she volunteers a lot of her time with the core group. She's painted rocks and she's involved herself in, herself in different core art organization, community service projects as well. So I'm so excited and proud of Ava. This is truly our first time meeting each other through this group, which is even more special to me. So congratulations, Ava.
Thank you, Ms. Alves. Congratulations to both of you. I appreciate all the hard work and effort you put into the National Junior Honors Society at Tivered and Middle School. So, first year on the map and we made it, we made it big. So, go TMS.
Thanks.
Ava did right in the chat to, uh, to everyone. Thank you. So, we appreciate all you do.
Great. Congratulations, Ava, and congratulations, Mrs. Craven, Ms. Alves, and Ms. Costa for your outstanding work with these kids.
And Dr. Locken, can we give these fine young ladies a round of applause, a virtual round of applause, best we can do? Thank you. Good job, ladies.
All right. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law, forty-two, forty-six, five, A. One, job performance, character, physical or mental health, teacher nonrenewals and termination and legal advice budget.
So moved.
Go roll call vote, Mrs. Pava.
Yes.
Mrs. Palish.
Yes.
Mr. Dakotas.
Yes.
Spider.
Yes.
I vote yes. So we are in executive session.
I'm going to put you guys into a breakout room.
Turned open session.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to report out we're back in open session. We discussed teacher non renewals and legal advice regarding the current budget. No votes were taken. I'm going to ask for motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Any opposed? Take that as unanimous, the motion are sealed. All right. So I'm going to ask for motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any opposed?
I think that is unanimous, the consent agenda is approved.
All right. Bear with me, I just need to get my agenda back. There it is. Okay, we are on item six A F Y twenty two budget update, Dr. Sanqyoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to share my screen with you for the presentation. Okay, I assume you all can see that and we'll give you an update of where the F Y twenty two budget currently resides. I've updated this slide here based upon the actions that were taken by the budget committee last week. And you can see in red there, a tentative budget has been proposed at thirty two point five, which is a one point two percent increase. The problem is we had such a drastic increase, decrease in state aid. That makes the, you know, what's happening here is that the town is just really filling a state aid gap. It's not really increasing our budget by all that much. The overall increase is around three point nine, but this drop in state aid is really been is part of the problem. So you can see what the town portion is, it's twenty five million, six hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty nine. But working off that number. Just want to remind the committee that that number is also going to leave us with a deficit. So when you talk about a deficit, you can't forget what's already happened to the Tivitan Public Schools. So again, I know shown shown the slide repeatedly, but again, reminding the committee that we lost twenty four point two F T E. Very important positions made a difference in our system and we're not even asking to reinstate those. The number we were looking for and hope is still under consideration is a thirty three point nine million dollar budget. It's level service, so no new staff programs or anything, just keeping what we're doing and moving it forward, not adding back any of the positions we cut. And without that number, anything below thirty three point nine means we've got to look at making reductions again. So you voted this budget because you were required by law not to exceed that amount and the budget committee approved it on the thirteenth last week. And that leaves us with a deficit, it leaves us with a deficit of one point four million, almost one point five million. And so I want to talk about and share with the committee what the impact of that is right now. So I worked diligently with our administrative team. It's hard to go through and think about eliminating staff after what we went through last year. But each one of the principals has examined their school and tried to make the least impactful cuts, although they are all impactful. And so when I share with you this list here, if we're faced with cutting one point four million, these, this is the direction we would go. We would eliminate the last elementary math specialist, so we had three, we dropped it to one this year, and now we would eliminate it. So that's eliminating all remedial and additional math support for students at the elementary level. We would make cuts from council ninety four to the two hundred three point five F T E. We would eliminate the high school family consumer science program. You know, this is a great elective that our kids truly enjoy. We have a retirement and Kathy Marshall, who served the district with distinction throughout her career. Rather than cut an existing program that would actually have us a body attached to it, we're making this decision here. We cut English, high school English, again, we made cuts in high school English last year. We would cut a grade seven math position. We made cuts to grade seven last year. We cut a high school math position, again, we cut high school math last year. We cut high school guidance, we cut high school guidance last year. We'd cut the high school reading specialist. We cut middle school.
Turned open session.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm gonna report out. We're back in open session. We discussed teacher non renewals and legal advice regarding the current budget. No votes were taken. I'm gonna ask for motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Any opposed? Take that as unanimous, the motion are sealed. All right. So I'm gonna ask for motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any opposed? Yeah, I think that is unanimous. The consent agenda is approved. All right. Bear with me, I just need to get my agenda back. There it is. Okay, we are on item six A FY twenty-two budget update. Dr. Sankeyoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm gonna share my screen with you for the presentation. Okay, I assume you all can see that and we'll give you an update of where the FY twenty-two budget currently resides. I've updated this slide here based upon the actions that were taken by the Budget Committee last week. And you can see in red there, a tentative budget has been proposed at thirty-two point five, which is a one point two percent increase. The problem is we had such a drastic increase, decrease in state aid. That makes the, you know, what's happening here is that the town is just really filling a state aid gap. It's not really increasing our budget by all that much. The overall increase is around three point nine, but this drop in state aid is really been, is part of the problem. So you can see what the town portion is, it's twenty-five million, six hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. But working off that number, just want to remind the committee that that number is also gonna leave us with a deficit. So when you talk about a deficit, you can't forget what's already happened to the Tivitan Public Schools. So again, I know I've shown this slide repeatedly, but again, reminding the committee that we lost twenty-four point two FTE, very important positions made a difference in our system and we're not even asking to reinstate those. The number we were looking for and hope is still under consideration is a thirty-three point nine million dollar budget. It's level service. So no new staff programs or anything, just keeping what we're doing and moving it forward, not adding back any of the positions we cut. And without that number, anything below thirty-three point nine means we've got to look at making reductions again. So you voted this budget because you were required by law not to exceed that amount and the Budget Committee approved it on the thirteenth last week. And that leaves us with a deficit. It leaves us with a deficit of one point four million, almost one point five million. And so I want to talk about and share with the committee what the impact of that is right now. So I worked diligently with our administrative team. It's hard to go through and think about eliminating staff after what we went through last year. But each one of the principals has examined their school and tried to make the least impactful cuts, although they are all impactful. And so when I share with you this list here, if we're faced with cutting one point four million, these, this is the direction we would go. We would eliminate the last elementary math specialist. So we had three. We dropped it to one this year and now we would eliminate it. So that's eliminating all remedial and additional math support for students at the elementary level. We would make cuts from council ninety-four to the two to three point five FTE. We would eliminate the high school family consumer science program. You know, this is a great elective that our kids truly enjoy. We have a retirement and Kathy Marshall, who served the district with distinction throughout her career. Rather than cut an existing program that would actually have a body attached to it, we're making this decision here. We cut English, high school English. Again, we made cuts in high school English last year. We would cut a grade seven math position. We made cuts to grade seven last year. We cut a high school math position. Again, we cut high school math last year. We cut high school guidance. We cut high school guidance last year. We'd cut the high school reading specialist. We cut middle school science and in a move to try to preserve as many of our staff people as possible, making a lot of small cuts, taking jobs from one point oh full time and moving them down to point eight. I give credit to Principal Craven. She examined her schedule, went as deep as she possibly could. And we made these type of moves too. So you can see here, it's twelve point seven total FTE. Now, again, I remind the committee, there's a lot of variables. There's the one budget we're using to address this. There's a request for thirty-three point nine and it's also ESER and could that help us out here? And there's a slide coming up on that. You know, a key point about this is this thirty-three point nine million dollar budget. It's a base. It's a base that someday the Tivitan Public Schools are going to have to fix a gap that's been longstanding and fix that one time. And I know I made this point, I think it's worth repeating that, once that gap is filled, the district could move forward then with future budget requests, very modest, in line with cost of living. We know we're always gonna receive state aid and the town would then, you know, requested a town would be in that one percent, two percent range, just enough to get our increases. Until the gap is filled, we're always gonna be chasing it. We're always gonna be creating cut lists because there's just this gap. I mean, you went back to the initial slide that I showed you and you saw previous years where the budget was being increased by less than one percent. And all those years now have caught up with the Tivitan Public Schools. So it's a one-time fix, I believe, that will allow us to move forward, very modest request. So that's the number. I continue to remind people that it's July seventeenth is the vote. And I also just want to bring into the conversation now ESER two. We know the ESER two amount. We know that the application is now available to us. It has some restrictions to it. Some of the things that we know we have to do is look at curriculum. We have to set aside a portion for summer learning and tutoring. So as we look at the seven fifty-six, it doesn't stretch that far. You know, things that we're recommending as a spending plan for this is to upgrade our math curriculum six twelve that desperately needs that. It hasn't been looked at in a large number of years. Again, meeting the obligation for summer learning and tutoring next year. And potentially then, we could pull back four positions off that list we just had there that we just showed you. Again, reminding the committee something that you already know, this is one-time money. So if we pull back four positions and fund it through ESER, a year from now, those positions become unfunded and we're back asking the town to help keep us solid, to not have any further reductions. And that's just a problem. It's a structural deficit and it's the reason why we are here today. So I believe that's it. That's the update. You know, we're appreciative of the consideration the Budget Committee gave us, but it's not a level service budget. So it puts us in a precarious situation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sankeyoni. I'm gonna open up the floor to members of the committee. Mrs. Beva.
I have nothing, Dr. Locken. I have no questions.
Dakota.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
And Mrs. Frender.
Dr. Sankeyoni, I think, put it very succinctly. Now, we will need to be making final determinations on the ESER funds when?
I'm gonna, was, was, so all we know right now is ESER two. We received an amount on ESER three. It's actually not confirmed that we have no application for ESER two. So the ESER three, excuse me, but for ESER two, Amy, do you remember what the deadline is?
So the application came out late last Thursday, which I believe was the thirteenth, and it's due back to RIDE by July first. And then we're subject to their fiscal and programmatic approval process, which they're promising it to be very quick turnaround, but with all the districts that they have to go through, it might take some time on that.
That's ESER two, correct?
That's ESER two. The guidelines for spending ESER three and the application for ESER three have not come out yet.
Do they have rolling approval or will we have to wait until after July first for any of that?
A rolling approval, so I plan to get it in well ahead of that. But the funds, you know, if we're gearing it towards next year, we had to get reimbursed for it, we actually have to wait to expend the funds until the proper year.
Dr. Locken, could I make a point?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So ESER two, and you know, you're seeing that we're using it for some of the purposes, but then we're using it to fill our own personal gaps. And, you know, I just want to impress upon the committee, that's not what this money was designed for. I sit on a Thursday meeting with all the East Bay superintendents. I may have said this to you last time. And as we go around the table and I listen to, you know, Middletown and Newport and Barrington and Bristol Warren, and they're talking about their ESER two funds and they're talking about hiring social workers. They're talking about hiring additional math tutors, reading specialists and all, all these things that are gonna enhance the learning opportunities for their kids. They're gonna serve their students at higher levels than they currently are. And what, you know, when they come around the Tivitan, what are you, what are you thinking of doing, Peter? It's like, well, we might advance our math curriculum a little bit. However, you know, we're gonna retain positions that are already there. So we're not giving our kids the gains and the advantages that every other community in Rhode Island is going to achieve. And I guess I just want to impress that point. I mean, I know we're stuck in a situation here, but that's not what ESER was designed for.
Thank you.
Thank you. So how much of the ESER two funds are you targeting to go to A, the math curriculum and B, the summer school or summer program?
Math curriculum, Amy, you get that number memorized?
Hundred and forty thousand.
And the twenty percent for tutoring and summer program, I think was a hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand, yes.
Right. Which is why we're limited to, you know, small callbacks.
Yeah, to reiterate or to expound on what Dr. Sankeyoni said, the, the goal of all of the ESER funds is to fill gaps, not gaps in local budgets, but education gaps, potential COVID mitigation gaps, things like that. And they were not designed to fill local budget deficits, but you know, to get the kids, you know, get the school districts, the resources they need to effectively get the children caught up to where they should be, given what they've experienced in the last, you know, twelve to fifteen months.
Do you have alternatives for us for spending these funds besides callbacks?
Well, we do. We'll submit the application that way initially. And if it, if it becomes rejected, then we have a backup plan. I mean, we want to reinstate the three math specialists at the elementary level, the reading specialist at the, at the high school. And there was also a math specialist cut at the middle school last year. So we start targeting positions that other districts are adding back that'll give our students those advantages. So yeah, we definitely have a backup plan.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I saw you, I saw your ads for summer program people.
All right.
So that's what spurred my curiosity as to, you know, what you were gonna do. All right, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Palish.
So if we have to have the application in July first and we're not gonna know our budget until July seventeenth, and our budget increase could be zero. Because we don't know, you know, we don't know what the petitioner's budgets are gonna be until, I guess by mid-June, we would.
Yeah.
Like mid-June, we'll know if there's a zero.
Yeah, June nineteenth is the last date that the petitioner's budget can be submitted.
Okay, that was really that. So really, June seventeenth will tell us what the options are. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? So yeah, I guess I'm curious, Peter, what, so if we were not in the position where, you know, we were making up from a level funded budget last year as well as, you know, sort of the year, not the year before last, but the year before, before last and so on, what would you be doing with ESER two?
It's sort of what I've alluded to. It would be, you know, math specialist at every elementary school, middle school fully staffed there. Chris would love his reading specialist back. He also had an academic support specialist last year that we cut. So we're bringing back programs that really ESER was designed for. We had them, unfortunately, we don't anymore. And then we would look at SEL. Every principal on this call would talk to you about the need to service our kids at a higher level there with social workers and adjustment councils and people like that. So that would be our targeted areas.
So I guess that's my question in a way, is what are the particular needs that your administrators are telling you we need to address as a result of the pandemic? So, you know, what ESER is supposed to be there for? Beyond what you just reiterated, you know, are there those? I would expect most districts would have something like that. Are there other things, particularly at Tiverton? I mean, we, we were back in session by October for the most part. Are there other things that you think that we lost this year of education?
Yeah, you know, I'll remind the committee that, you know, we were back in, but we still had twenty-five percent of our students out initially and we certainly have dragged them back in throughout the year. I shouldn't say dragged them back in. They came back because we were, we were so successful in dealing with the, with maintaining the virus. So there's gaps there. And so every principal could talk to you about how to, how we want to fill those gaps. And you know, I mentioned, I don't want to be redundant, but it's, it's a double dose of math. It's a double dose of reading. It's a double dose of, you know, science or something to that effect. It's being able to give a student the counseling or the individual attention they need to an adjustment counselor. Or it's a social worker who now can interact with families at higher levels and get them through the struggles they're having at home. And we do very little of that work right now. But that's the stuff that other communities are doing. You know, they're bringing in people to go out to homes and to talk to families who are struggling and finding out what their needs are and how the schools can support them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from our administrators? And anything from the public in this court?
Not at this time, Dr. Locken.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Dr. Sankeyoni, to be clear, there is no budget on the table right now that does that for us. The one percent forces us to dip into ESER funds. Zero would be disastrous.
And, you know, to be clear, the, all I know is ESER two and ESER two will not fill that gap. So we're, even if you use all the ESER two funds to retain positions, and again, we don't know if that application would even be accepted. We're still cutting people. And then we could look at ESER three, but you know, certainly if ESER two gets rejected, then we know the answer and we're in an even tougher position.
But to be fair, there is a rejection for ESER three. But again, one of the things I tried to emphasize with the Budget Committee is it is not money in the hand.
Right. It's a projection and there's no application.
There's no application that we know of yet. I mean, they could.
Yeah. So RIDE is waiting for guidance from OMB, the final guidance on how it can be spent. And then RIDE needs to develop the application in a cell of grants and work out all the bugs and then they will make it public for us to use and input.
And sort of theoretically, to take an absurdist example, they could say, yes, your ESER three projection or allocation is five million dollars. And what that is, is that every school district can apply for five million dollars worth of fire trucks. But you can't use it for teachers. You can't use it for social workers. You feel that schools need fire trucks in the parking lot. I'm, it's an absurd example, but it is that level of unknowingness. So we can't.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Locken. Because the funds are coming from the federal government, the federal government can dictate with as much or as little specificity on how to use those funds as they desire.
Right. And so, you know, in discussing this with the Budget Committee on Thursday, you know, one of the things is I'm, I guess I'm more optimistic about the flexibility than I was a month ago, but I'm not yet willing to say this is money that we have, you know, full flexibility on, we can do that, you know.
But the bottom line always comes back to it's one-time funds and we'll be having the same discussion and we'll be making these same layoffs next year.
That's correct.
Yes. That's the thing about math. Stuff that's real. Yes.
I, I do want to give some recognition to Mr. Akri on the Budget Committee, who really did see that, recognize that even with the one point one eight percent that we're getting, that it's not enough. And he made those feelings known even despite their vote. And I do want to thank him for that. I was in the audience watching and saying, okay, well, somebody gets it. And so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, ultimately, it's the voters that are gonna decide this. So everyone watching at home. And I hope there's thousands, but maybe not so much. You know, it is the voters that ultimately will decide this issue. So I think that unless there's any other comments or questions for our administrators or the committee, or if anyone's chimed in from the public, please let me know. Julie, we will move on to item six B, budget versus actual. Ms. Roderick.
Thank you. Let me share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
You good, Amy?
Okay, so this is, as we've seen just about almost every month this year, I did once again, take the liberty of, instead of having this for April, I did it through May thirteenth, which was last Thursday, and includes all the bills that we had in hand as of that date. So, you know, as if you've had a chance to look at it, you, you can see some accounts are well under budget, some accounts are over budget. But I can tell you with even more confidence than last week that we will come in on budget as a total. And as of right now, to address Mr. Dakota's question from last meeting, right now, with the information I presently have, I don't believe there's gonna be extra that we could carry over to next year or any substantial amount of extra to carry over into next year.
And Amy, when you say carry over, you mean reduce the deficit that we already have?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes. Reduce the deficit we already have. Correct. And I, you know, I'm happy to go through line item by line item or some of the bigger ones, or I can leave it for you folks to provide questions right now and I can answer them specifically.
I was gonna say, can you just, for people that are watching, just scroll to the bottom so they can see the bottom?
Sure.
I mean, we have the whole thing. I know. Thank you.
There we go. So you're welcome. So this is FY twenty-one, the current year through last Thursday versus May thirty-first of last year, we did not have, we are unable to run reports as of a specific date. So while this is not exactly a one-to-one comparison, it does show you that overall for the year, we have spent approximately, as of this date, roughly ten percent less. Now granted, there's still one more payroll in May to go in there and so forth, but still considerably less than we had spent at the same time last year. And again, many, many, many thanks to the principals and the department heads who are just being so fantastic and judicious about what they're purchasing. And, you know, anything that's related to the ESER funds, they're waiting to hold off so we don't have to use current year resources and do a reimbursement and sort of all of that. So so this thirty-three, to Mrs. Palish's point, the thirty-three point two million budget represents a one million seventy-five thousand dollar deficit spend over what the town provided us overall for the budget, including state aid. And we are funding that through Medicaid and the remainder of our fund balance. And to date, we've spent just over twenty-six million. And again, we have another payroll coming in and all the benefits and so forth, which is probably another million dollars, but we're still perform, performing expense-wise much better than we were last year. uh, and all the benefits and so forth, which is probably another million dollars, but uh, we're still um, perform, performing expense wise, much better than we were last year. And all of our costs are being met. Uh, we um you know, there are fluctuations in some accounts, but for some that are over, we have others that are under. Uh, and it should come out pretty close to a wash. I actually spent most of the afternoon today analyzing the rest of the payroll for the year. Uh, we should come in right on, right on the nose for that, along with the pension. Um, I believe we may have a small savings in health insurance. Um, you know, which is offset by any, you know, some other benefits and so forth. So um, I, I, every week I basically go through this report. Um, it not this formal report here, but I run a report out of the system and I start placing calls and I, you know, are we going to be spending this? We not going to be spending that. Um, we you know, have, for example, like fuel oil, I don't expect any more expenses for that because the heat is off. We've, we've topped off everything for the year. I wouldn't expect to see any more expenses in that. And I've confirmed that with Mr. Mendes. See what else have I? So I'm silly. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could you go back up to the top, please?
Sure.
Um, and, and thank you for, for all of your information. I, I can see for certain that um, we're the, the restraint on spending is very evident in a lot of these lines. My question is about um athletic stipends. Um, is that a end of year payment that goes or?
It is. It is. It'll be paid in June.
Is that for all sports for the year?
Well, we have paid some sports for the year. There's roughly forty thousand. Some sports were not held and um, but also like, for example, football was deferred until the spring. So the football code, that sort of thing. So there's a, you know, another ninety or a hundred thousand dollars in stipends that will be hanging out in June.
Oh, you know, I forgot about football, but yeah.
You know, football lacrosse, uh, Dr. Senki, am I missing anything that got moved from volleyball? Volleyball.
Okay.
Um, we reached out um, to all the principals, uh, in particular, Mr. Ashley and Miss, Mrs. Craven about all the extracurricular activities that had occurred. There are some that did occur um, in terms of um, some of the um not the sports, but the, you know, like the, the clubs and so forth, those did occur. Um, so yeah, we have about another ninety years, hundred thousand in stipends that will be paid out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm trying to think of anything else. Unless there's something specific, I don't want to sort of waste, not waste, but spend everyone's time going over every detail. Um, we may potentially have some savings with the bus monitors. Um, we've paid all the bills through April and it's coming a little bit lower than we expected, but we'll take it. See what else? Uh, the actual buses should come in on, uh, on or very close to budget. Same thing with all the tuitions I went through and I analyzed the tuitions, uh, where one might be over, another might be under. So we should come in fairly even there. Electricity, unfortunately, we're going to use the whole three hundred and seventy based on my analysis. Um, and again, we had some savings in that area last year because the kids weren't in school for the last quarter effectively of school, but this year they're, they've been in the whole time. Some of the improvements that were done, you know, some of that is um the steps at the middle school, and I forget what some of the other ones are, but uh, and we had some settlements and so forth, but um special education service agencies, everything to the region should be right on budget. Good news, I guess, on budget, still a deficit spend.
Amy, speaking of the region, do you think you could get us an updated Medicaid? Statement?
I can certainly send that to you this evening. We have it through April. I can send that to you this evening. Yes.
Our next meeting is fine. I, I don't need it right away. I just think it's.
We have. We have um, just over a million dollars in there of which we are taking down uh, six seventy five this year. As you know, there is a holdback of like a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The last couple of months where the kids are coming back in, we're getting a little bit higher reimbursement than we expected. Uh, but certainly not enough to carry over to make a, a big enough difference um, in the staffing plans and so forth for next year. Um, and if we end up with, you know, maybe some higher cost special education cases, we can take that down to cover those if they're unexpected. So I wouldn't want to wipe that out entirely, but um uh, again, fairly mundane, what I'm presenting to you is fairly mundane, uh, but um, is accurate and is up to date as of close of business last Thursday.
I, I just wanted to make a general comment, Amy, and, and, and you're doing a, you know, great job here that when we build this budget, we build this budget, we built this budget eighteen months ago.
We built it eighteen months ago.
Like, I don't think people understand eighteen months, we build this budget in advance. So um, the fact that we are on budget and that Amy is so closely monitoring the, you know, and it's not unusual to have some accounts be over and some accounts be under. And again, it's eighteen months before. And the fact that Amy, you're doing such a good job making sure that it, it, it is going to land where we need it to and that we're not going to spend even more of, you know, we're not going to have an even larger deficit. That is a credit to uh, you and the rest of the um, principals.
Thank you. I appreciate that. A lot of credit goes to them. They've, they've heated uh, my nagging, I guess. Uh, if you want to call it that, but um, they, they are extraordinarily good about uh, running any major issue financially past me before pulling the trigger. So I appreciate their cooperation and it's uh, we have a really good team going here and that's also a part to Dr. Senki on it. So uh, I'm happy to do what I can for the district. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Amy. And uh couldn't emphasize or support Deb's comments more. You've been doing a great job. And that was one of the questions on the budget committee, which I think I can gave that answer that Deb expressed much more eloquently.
Thank you.
So any other questions or any questions from the rest of the committee, Mike?
No, thank you.
Okay, Elaine?
No, thank you. Great job, Amy. Thank you.
Diane, anything else?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Deb?
All set, Jerry. Thank you.
Okay. And any questions from the public, Ms. Delcourt?
Not at this time, Dr. Larkin.
Any questions from any of our administrators? Okay, thank you. So our next item is uh, seven agenda.
Seven A.
Yep, seven A. Sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Elaine.
Okay.
Request approval to accept donation from Bay Coast Bank, Dr. Senki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a letter in your packet tonight. Bay Coast Bank would like to donate a ten dollar gift certificate to Marisol's Cafe Endowment to each one of our hundred twenty seniors that are graduating this year. I ask you to accept this donation with gratitude.
Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept?
Any discussion?
I, I just want to thank Bay Coast. They have been such a great partner. For, for lots of things in town, um, schools and, and other things, but they have really been a, a great community partner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, appreciate our uh, gratitude and Peter will send them a nice letter and
Absolutely.
Valentine's Day card at Valentine's Day, Christmas.
You know, and also Marisol's Cafe, if you haven't been there, it's worth going to.
Okay. Take a roll call vote. Ms. Palish?
Yes.
Ms. Farner?
Yes.
Ms. Pava?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota's?
Yes.
What? Yes. It's an opportunity to say something affirmative rather than, I can say, all right. Next is item seven B, teacher non-renewal, Dr. Senki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's uh, with the greatest regret and sustained hope that I ask you to uh, accept the list of non-renewals that I presented to you this evening and consider accepting that um, as I recommended.
I'll make the motion to accept the list as presented to us.
Second.
And I'm disgusted.
Yeah, I think I can speak for the entire committee that we do this with the utmost regret and uh, with the hope that we will be able to get a budget that is going to bring everyone back. So motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota's?
Yes.
Mrs. Farner?
Yes.
Mrs. Palace?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero with regret. Uh, item seven D, resolution expressing support for the state reimbursement transportation services cost for public and private school pupils bill, uh, H six zero three zero. And Ms. Farner?
Sorry, I had to get myself off mute. So um, as part of the consent agenda last week, there was a resolution from, I think it was the Smithfield School Committee, and that was also put in your packet today. Um, what I would like us to do is to have a resolution of our own um, in support of this bill. And so I took it upon myself to draft it and I did send everyone a copy. Uh, I, I think it may have been yesterday. Um, did you want me to read through it, Jerry, or?
I think that might be good for the public and for uh, all of us.
Okay. So the Tiverton School Committee Resolution in Support of H six oh three oh relating to state uh, state for transportation services costs for public and private school pupils. Whereas the health and safety of pupils is the, of the utmost importance to the Tiverton School Committee. And whereas providing adequate funding to Tiverton's public schools is critical to ensuring equity to students across our town. Whereas Tiverton is a community covering nearly thirty square miles of land, making it impossible for most students to walk to school. And whereas the cost of providing transportation services has increased significantly over the last few years with an increase of twenty four point four percent or four hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars experienced in F Y twenty one alone. Whereas rap- rapidly rising transportation costs are more than any community can sustain over time. The ongoing and ever increasing transportation costs cannot be reduced without compromising the health and safety of our children. These costs are now impacting our ability to maintain a high quality of education for all our students. And whereas these transportation costs are having an impact on local school district budgets enforcing districts such as our own to move funds from areas of operating budgets to cover these transportation cost increases causing undue budgetary stress on educational programming, which results in inequity across our district. And now therefore be it resolved that the Tiverton School Committee supports House Bill six zero three zero, six zero three zero and respectfully request that the Rhode Island General Assembly enact the bill into law. Now therefore be it further resolved that the clerk of the Tiverton School Committee send a copy of this resolution to the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, Governor of the State of Rhode Island, the President of the Rhode Island Senate, the Speaker of the Rhode Island House of Representatives and the Senators and Representatives from the town of Tiverton adopted by the Tiverton School Committee, should you vote at a meeting held on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty one. The reason I, I brought this up, this is, this is a bill that is currently um under consideration. It's being, it, it was officially held to study. Um, it was introduced by Representatives Tanze, Mac, McIntyre, Fogarty, Speakman Donovan and Portrevan from Portsmouth. Um, and it specifically mentions that the cost of the school committees would be uh, reimbursed by the state. And I think it's, it's very important, you know, just that one piece of this where we experienced a twenty four percent increase in transportation this year. The budget that the budget committee just approved does not even cover this increase. That's how big this increase was. And, and I think it's time that the state of Rhode Island, especially in light of the fact that, you know, there is no real competition. I know, Dr. Larkin, you spoke to it um, a number of times. There really is no competition amongst the bus companies. And um, you know, it's, it's something that's just getting out of hand. And I think all school committee should be supporting this resolution. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Have no questions, Diane. It's, there's been such significant increases over the last several years. Thinking about all those increases makes me wonder realize, not wonder, how this could have helped our budget somewhat. It wouldn't have helped our budget complete bu- budget problem, but it would have helped significantly to reduce the crisis wherein now.
Great point.
It, it has. It's become a, a major cost, one that we can't overlook.
There are no, the, the problem is there is no competition. There's no petition. There are two bus services providers. So you take A or you take B, and it doesn't matter which one you, they're, they're way out of our league. They're, they're way too expensive for all these communities to fund them. So legislators have to recognize this. They have to, you know, help us out a little bit here. Thank you.
Well, we just add to that is that, that it is rare for them to both bid in the same community. So I don't know how they understand that. You know, they're not. It's funny how they both know who's bidding where.
Isn't it?
Funny, yeah. Any uh, so any other questions, Elaine? We'll go through that.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
No, couldn't have said it better than Elaine.
Mike?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Diane, for drafting this. I was going to ask for, I didn't get the motion. So cast of a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And any questions for our administrators? Any questions from the public?
Not at this time, Dr. Larkin.
Any questions from the bus company? All right, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. This is Pavo.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota's?
Yes.
Mrs. Farner, uh, yeah, Ms. Farner.
Yes, and thank you.
Yes, and thank you, Diane.
Yeah, I vote yes. Thanks, Dan. So motion carries five zero. Uh, that is it for everything. Um, so we have as we're up to item eight, announcement, schedules, meetings, reports. We have a scheduled meeting for June eighth. I asked us to add a meeting at least tentatively for June twenty second. As the, you know, usually we don't have a second meeting in June, but uh, usually the budget will have been history at that point. And uh, I believe we will still need to probably consider some of these issues. So pencil that in and then July thirteenth, and then of course, the financial front will be July uh, seventeen. Um, just on their announcements, uh, especially for parents and students, uh, we are having our vaccine clinic uh, on May twenty first. Uh, that is my birthday, so I'll ask for a birthday present of every student who can to come and get vaccinated. I've been vaccinated by this with this same vaccine. It is very safe and you know, I'll uh, I guess I'll stand on privileges chair for a second. You know, You know, for anyone who's hesitating about this vaccine, it's important to understand that. Most negative side effects happen with vaccines as opposed to medications. So in medications, it can be months or years before we have enough people taking it long enough. To see it, but adverse adverse effects of vaccines generally happen within a very short period after receiving the vaccine and usually. The rollout is relatively slow so that you don't get the numbers to see, in effect. For some period of time after the vaccine has been introduced. We've given this vaccine to over 150 million people in the United States. If there was a signal of an adverse. Reaction, we would have seen it by now. So I feel very confident in this vaccine. My two children. Who are now eligible as 14 and or 13 and 15 year olds, their ages keep on changing. I don't know why. Will be getting vaccinated on Friday, and my 18 year old son already has had his first vaccine. He'll get his third sometime in the next week or so. So I would encourage all of our students to get vaccinated. It is the. Price of freedom, but also it's the price of protecting your your family, your friends, your community. So. Come to the clinic. Dr. Senkioni, can you tell me how how? Our staff has got a very high vaccination rate at this point. Is that correct?
We are over 90% last time we checked, and it's probably higher because some staff members have access to student vaccine clinics, and we haven't rechecked our numbers. We're getting up there.
So kudos to our staff too for stepping up. This is not just for for them. Of course, there is a benefit for them. And again, this vaccine is very effective. 95% of preventing infection and 100%. So listen to that 100%. And the absence of some other immune compromising condition at preventing serious illness and death. So there's not too many things in medicine you can say are 100%, but this appears to be 100%. So I'll get off my. Soapbox. Those are our announcements. Anyone else?
Dr. Larkin, just to. Would we want to start? And I hate to do this, the second meeting in July after the FDR.
Do I want to have a meeting? We well may have to. I was.
Just something to for everyone to keep in mind.
Yeah, I was going to let June 22nd sink in first.
What is the date, Diane? Do you have that date? We're going.
The FTR is the 17th, right?
So, yeah, that's. It's the 20th?
20th.
Okay.
Our usual sequence of, you know, the second and fourth would be the 27th, but. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I might not be here either, Elaine.
I'm trying to remember our dates.
But you'll have a laptop with you wherever you are.
True.
Yeah, but if you're down in a place where you have nothing, even my, and I don't even trust my phones, but.
I unfortunately will not be any place as fun as Elaine.
How many? How many meetings have you seen me running from a car?
And other places.
More than once.
We sometimes wonder where you are. You're like a man in disguise.
Town farms, long flats.
We also have to leave open the possibility that we'll be meeting in person by then.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what.
All right, well. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Unless someone else has something else.
No, second.
You're forced. All right, passes by consent. Good night, everyone.